Call this meeting to order. Mr. Salazar.
Mr. Amaya, members of the board, this evening we have students from two campuses here to help lead us in the pledge of allegiance. We begin, I'll begin by introducing Mr. Jerry Gomez, principal of Palmer Loxo Elementary, a leader in me campus, and she's going to introduce us to a couple of students.
Mr. Amaya, members of the board, Mr. Salazar, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to introduce to you Kyle William Busquets. He is a first grader. He is a first grader at Palmer Loxo Elementary. He is in Mrs. Walcott's class and his favorite subject is math because he likes to be challenged. He also likes to read and play video games. Kyle says he loves his family because they are always there to help him. Kyle would like to be a coach when he grows up because he loves sports and he would love to help kids be good athletes. Also representing Palmer Loxo Elementary, we have Elena Longoria. Elena is five years old. She is a kindergarten student in Mrs. Delgado's class. Elena wants you to know in her classroom, she sometimes gets to be the line leader for the whole day. She loves to play video games, read and color. Her favorite thing to do at school is math. She loves to spend time with her family. She likes it when they go to the park and play on the slide. Elena wants to be a doctor when she grows up because she wants to help kids feel better.
We have a couple more students here to help lead us and to introduce us to those students. Is there a principal, Mr. Paul Al Jr.? Paul?
Thank you. Mr. Amaya, members of the board, I'd like, we've got Meredith Yaritu. He's the, she is the daughter of Haiti and Guillermo Yaritu. She's in the fourth grade. Meredith has always been known, yes, please. Meredith has always been known for her hard work and someone who's determined to succeed. Her favorite subject is science because she likes the exploration and all the experiments. One of Meredith's favorite things to do is dance. Meredith is best described as joyful, smart and a hard worker. When she grows up, she'd love to be a dance teacher and an artist. Ian Meyer, son of Dulce and Klaus Meyer, he's also in the fourth grade. Ian has been an honor roll student since kindergarten. He enjoys reading and math and he loves a challenge. Ian, as I found out, is also an avid Steelers fan. Yes, we've had many a discussion. Ian is a hard worker, shows empathy for others. In his free time, he takes acting classes and gymnastics. When he grows up, Ian would like, love to be an actor.
Ladies and gentlemen, these children are here to help lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Will everyone please rise for the pledge? Our parents here, parents of these fine children, if you would stand please and be recognized. Thank you and thank you to our principals and thank you to these students for, for leading us tonight. Ms. Garcia, roll call please.
Mr. Jesus Amaya.
Present.
Mr. Leonel Gachba.
Present.
Ms. Sandra F. B. I. M. here, Mr. Martin Castillo.
Present.
Ms. Darlene Peterson.
Present.
Mr. Ray Farías.
Present.
Mr. Ruben Trevino.
Present.
Mr. Gonzalo Salazar.
Present.
And Ms. Elizabeth Neely.
Thank you ma'am. District recognition, Mr. Salazar.
Mr. Amaya, members of the board, at each of our meetings, we set some time aside to recognize the achievements and the accomplishments of our students and our staff. And this evening, we've invited our principals to introduce us to teachers that have been modeling lifelong learning. And so to begin, we will start with Mrs., Mrs. Stumball, who will introduce us to LFU teachers who've been working on getting advanced degrees.
Good evening, Mr. Amaya, members of the board, Mrs. Salazar. Thank you for having me here. I am very honored tonight to bring to you not just one, but three employees from Los Fresnos United. I'm going to start with Ms. Charmaine Tome. Charmaine, if you'll join me up here. Charmaine is our dual speech teacher. We were lucky enough to snag her at semester as she was finishing up her masters in communications from UTRGV. If she looks familiar to you, that would be because she was a student here in Los Fresnos. Her mom is a teacher at the high school and her younger brother is still a high school student. So, we're very proud to have her. We're proud of her accomplishments. Because she has that masters, we're able to offer dual speech to our students, which is a huge advantage. Not every district around us is able to do that. So, we're blessed to have Charmaine and that she was able to finish her masters so quickly and at such a young age and be able to, to be a dual college professor with us. The second person we have to... The second person that we have tonight is Mr. Bobby Torres, if you'll join me up here. Mr. Torres was, joined us back at LFU last year? Time goes fast, it's hard to remember. But, Mr. Torres has continued his education in administration. He's got a lot of experience as a special ed teacher and as a coach and thought that he might see himself as an administrator one day. So, he went back to school with UTRGV and he has just finished his educational administration program with them and we're very proud of him and his accomplishments. And our final staff member is Dr. Rosalva Sovedra. I really don't feel qualified to introduce her right now. If you know Dr. Sovedra, she joined Los Fresnos a few years ago as an administrator. She started off at Los Squatos and she joined us last year at LFU. I can't say enough about her hard work, her work ethic, her dedication, and to do all that while going back to school is, is really impressive. So, we are very proud of her for finishing up and for earning her doctorate degree in educational leadership with Lamar University. So, congratulations to all three of you.
Thank you. There are others here to introduce us to teachers from Rosaca Middle School. A teacher from Rosaca Middle School is Dr. Swatner, Dr. Swatner.
Thank you, Mr. Amaya, members of the board and Mr. Salazar. Good evening. I would like to proudly represent Mr. Javier Moron. Mr. Moron is formerly a music teacher at La Cescas. He's been with the district for many, many years. And Mr. Moron joins us this year at Rosaca as an assistant band instructor. We're very excited to have him. Mr. Moron has a lot of experience. He does have a music degree from Texas State University, but in working with students, he began to focus on social leadership as something he felt that our students lacked and needed. And he developed a desire to become a lifelong learner as an example to his son and to the students he serves. And he went back and got his masters in counseling from Lamar University, which he just completed in August of this year. So, congratulations to him. I just want to share that I asked him to share a few thoughts with me and I don't like to read from these things, but the one thing he said that stuck with me and explains why he's so valuable and precious to our campus, he says, "I love my faith, I love my family, I love being a role model and I love education." Thank you.
Dr. Swatner, before you go, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask the teachers, the staff members that were just here to come back up. We have a flak to commemorate this achievement for all of you.
I'm never going to be asked to start again.
You're so hard on yourself, but you're right. This is the principal of Los Fresnos Elementary.
Mr. Amaya, members of the board, Mr. Salazar, my name is Rose Ray Liaw and I am honored to present Ms. Delacruz, Elizabeth Delacruz, for recently receiving her masters of science in li, in school library from the University of North Texas. This is Ms. Delacruz, 13th year of service in our district where she has served as para third grade teacher and now our media specialist. Elizabeth is a sponsor of several student organization on campus, which includes Spirit Team, EAE, Reading Plus, Reading Club, Ecology Club, and she loves to serve, and all the years she served at LFE. I'm also honored to present Ms. Janie Paradise, for recently receiving her masters in library science from the, from Sam Houston Uni, State University. This is Janie, 14th year of service in our district where she has served as kindergarten teacher and first grade teacher. She too sponsors a student organization on campus and she, which is EAE. Both ladies do a phenomenal job serving our students at Los Fresnos Elementary and they love being part of our family. So, congratulations, Ms. Delacruz and Ms. Paradise.
Next we call on Principal Oscar De La Rosa from La Cescas Elementary.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Amaya, members of the board, Mr. Salazar and public audience. It's my pleasure to introduce Zuli Aguilar. This is Zuli's first year as a librarian at La Cescas. And this is the first year that we have on our campus, so hopefully we can keep her. Previously, Zuli was at LFE. She was serving as a fifth grade teacher. Zuli attended Sam Houston University and earned her masters degree in library science this past December. Congratulations to Zuli.
Next we'll have Mr. Paul Al, principal of Villarreal Elementary, introduce us to one of his staff members.
Good evening once again, Mr. Amaya, members of the board and Mr. Salazar. Ms. Esther Alvarado, one of our outstanding Villarreal teachers. Ms. Alvarado earned her masters of education curriculum instruction for University of Texas, Rio Grande Valley. She's been an educator for the last 19 years, 13 of those past years has been right here as an elementary bilingual teacher. She decided to continue her education, earning her masters to set an example for her children as well as those students that she serves. She thanks God and her family for the continued support. She feels very blessed she was able to accomplish her goal. Esther Alvarado.
This is Jerry Gomez, principal of Palmer Loxo Elementary.
Mr. Amaya, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, I am so proud to be able to introduce two of my staff members this evening. First, I'd like to start with Ms. Sarah Rodriguez. Sarah has been a part of Palmer Loxo Elementary. This is her third year working in the PPCD unit. Sarah got her masters, her bachelor's degree from UTB in 2015 in elementary education. Just this past May, Sarah obtained her masters in special education from Texas A&amp;M. Sarah has many educators in her family and she plans to continue her education in January by beginning her degree in school psychology. She decided to keep going. She would one day like to be an LSST. If you don't know what that is, it is a licensed specialist in school psychology. She's on fire right now with a PTO and we very much love having her there. Sarah Rodriguez. We also have Mrs. Jackie Delagarza. Jackie has been a teacher at Palmer for the past 10 years. She's been teaching in third grade, fourth grade. Right now, she's in her third year of kindergarten and learning so much about how to teach kiddos to read. She has obtained her bachelor's degree in elementary education from UTB. And this past May, she earned her masters degree from Lamar University in curriculum and instruction and literacy studies, I'm sorry, not Lamar, from University of Texas at Arlington. Mrs. Delagarza says watching kids learn is exciting and she feels that she makes a positive difference in these young children as they become readers. She would like to eventually become a teacher leader in reading. Right now, we are very much benefiting from her knowledge at our campus and helping our kiddos to become strong readers. So, I'm very proud of these ladies here from Palmer.
Laureles would be next, continuing in alphabetical order. They had one teacher, Ms. Crystal Ley Torres, receive a masters degree, her mid-management and administrative certification. Another school district said what? Los Fresnos, masters degree, will pick her up. She's gone and she's employed in another district, but let's give her a round of applause, Ms. Crystal Ley Torres. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Linda Rodriguez, principal of Volmito Elementary, to introduce us to teachers on her campus.
Good evening, Mr. Amaya, members of the board and Mr. Salazar and our public audience. I'm Linda Rodriguez, proud principal of Volmito Elementary, and this evening, I have the honor of introducing three staff members who've accomplished something great. First of all, we'd like to congratulate our science lab teacher, Mrs. Yolanda Noyola, who recently... She received a masters degree in curriculum and instruction with an emphasis in science from UTRGV. She began her career with Los Fresnos CISD in 2001 in first grade and now for the past 10 years has been sharing her knowledge and her love of science with her students and colleagues. Currently, she is a club sponsor and she is also part of our PTA board. She'd like to say thank you to God, her husband and her daughter, for their support in her accomplishing a lifetime goal. You can find her at hashtag LFCISD is the place to be. To someone with a heart of gold, Ms. Alyssa Perales, who started her teaching career at Volmito Elementary four years ago. She is a special education teacher for our preschool program for children with disabilities unit. She's in, she has an incredible passion for working with children with disabilities, which drove her to excel in her level of knowledge, confidence and independence by pursuing her masters degree in special education with an emphasis in early childhood from UTRGV. And she is also our volleyball sponsor. Her closest colleague, Mr. Eric Juárez, also received his masters degree in special education with an emphasis in early childhood from UTRGV. He has dedicated 12 years to working with students with disabilities and we are fortunate to have him on our campus as a PPCD teacher. However, unfortunately, he was not able to join us this, this evening. So, to Mrs. Noyola, Ms. Perales and Mr. Juárez, OES staff and students are very proud of you.
Next I call on Mr. Jimmy McDonough, executive director for academics. I'm sorry. Mr. McDonough is just going to have to wait because Ms. Grimaldo gets the lectern first. Ms. Grimaldo, principal of Dora Romero Elementary, my apologies.
Good evening, Mr. Amaya, members of the board and Mr. Salazar. Today, I introduce to you Ms. Kimberly King. She is a first grade teacher at Dora Romero Elementary. In May, she completed her masters degree in tr, early childhood from North Central University. She has a passion for early childhood and enjoys the little ones, so much so that she just had one two months ago. So, congratulations to her. She's been on, she's been teaching for 10 years and is an asset here at VRE. Thank you. Congratulations to you.
Now we call on Mr. McDonough. Mr. McDonough?
Thank you, Mr. Amaya, Mr. Salazar, members of the board. Tonight is my pleasure to bring before you Dr. Jesse Fidelio Garza. Dr. Garza is one of our digital learning specialists. He's in his second year with us here in Los Fresnos. Before that, he served for nine years as a CTE teacher. He's done a wonderful job as our digital learning specialist, probably best known throughout the district for some of his initiatives that he spearheaded, including our new digital learning academy, Techie Tuesdays. And he just received his doctorate in education, his doctorate in edu, in technology and educational leadership from the University of Phoenix. He's also a published author. So, again, we'd like to congratulate Dr. Jesse Fidelio Garza.
In any circumstance, the, the advanced degrees are always very difficult to attain. At the same time, when you have a full-time employee working all day and have responsibilities after school, someone else has to pick up those responsibilities. In many cases, it's a spouse, in some cases, it's a parent. It may be an older child that's at home doing some of the things that that person that's going back to school is doing now. So, if we have those individuals, someone that's been by you, you know, while you're doing all this work, if you would stand so we could honor you all, please. Thank you very much for allowing them to do what they're doing. I didn't know this fact, I was just, they were just whispered in my ear that that brings us up to 30% of our entire faculty, I guess that is, has an advanced degree of some kind. Congratulations to everybody.
We continue with our, our recognitions and this, this evening, he's already at the lectern, Mr. Justin Stumball will introduce us to our students who are advanced placement scholars.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Salazar. It's my privilege to introduce you to 16 of our best and brightest students from Los Fresnos High School. I'm going to introduce our 2017 AP Scholars. These are ver, there are various levels of AP Scholars. We have six of them that are AP Scholars, which means they have scored a three or higher on three exams. Four students who are AP Scholars with honors, which means they scored a three or higher on four exams. And we have one student who's an AP Scholar with distinction, which means they scored a three or higher on five exams. Have you ever seen these exams? You should see the kids when they walk out. You can tell it's a strenuous exam. So, scoring that high on that many exams is something to be extremely proud of. So, I'm going to start with our AP Scholars with Mr. Alan Benavides. Our next AP Scholar is Ms. Alejandra Diaz. Andrea Gallegos. Reagan Garza. Isaac Munoz. Jonathan Sandman. Moving to our AP Scholars with honors is Julian Echeverria. Andrea Herbert. Krista Chovella. Christopher Riveda. Again, these are our AP Scholars for 2017. Many of them are in extracurricular activities, so time management is an essential skill for these and they have excelled in that. So, again, congratulations, we're very proud of you. Thank you. Next I'll introduce our 11 National Hispanic Scholars. The students we'll recognize tonight have achieved a great academic distinction. Each year, the College Board National Hispanic Recognition Program recognizes high-performing students from across the country. These students have scored in the top 2.5% among Hispanic students taking the junior year administration of the PSAT. In addition to receiving a top score on the PSAT, these students have had to meet the added requirement of holding at least a 3.5 GPA by the middle of their junior year. Even though College Board does not award a monetary scholarship with this award, achieving this distinction very often leads to scholarship offers from universities. I will introduce our 2018 National Hispanic Scholars, starting with Isaac De La Lam, De La Lama. Some of them are double-dippers you just saw a minute ago. One of them is Alejandra Diaz. Julian Echeverria. Reagan Garza. Sebastian Gonzalez. Mariah Gutierrez. Isaac Munoz. Jared Perez. Edric Salazar. And Jonathan Sandman.
While Mr. Stumball is doing that, I know that we have some proud parents in the audience. If you would please stand so we can honor you.
Again, a very prestigious group, and we're very proud for your hard work, and thank you for coming out. Y'all have a great evening. Thank you.
Mr. Amaya, members of the board, and ladies and gentlemen in the audience, don't know if you heard, but this past week, we had Department of Education recognize one of our campuses with the highest distinction. Secretary of Education Betsy DeVos named Rancho Verde Elementary a Blue Ribbon School. And I'd like the principal and all campus staff members that are with her this evening to please come forward. Ms. Elisa Pineda is a proud principal of Rancho Verde Elementary. She is a servant leader, and under her leadership, the campus has achieved great things. Fifteen percent, you have to be in the fifteen percent of schools in the state as far as student performance goes, and all, or be with the top fifteen percent of schools closing the achievement gaps. We're very proud of this achievement. This makes us, this makes two Blue Ribbon Schools for the Los Fresnos CISD, and we couldn't be more proud. Congratulations.
Ms. Pineda said it once, congratulations to you and your staff. I don't know if all elementaries do this, but I know that Mr. McDonough, well, the cabinet was there, and David was there, and you had, how many were in the cafeteria? Over five hundred? Six fifty. Okay? Nobody higher than three foot. They're like this. All sitting down. Sometimes, you know, they might start talking. And then, all of a sudden, over the, on the microphone, all you hear is... Everything stops. And Jimmy and I were, I said, "Did you see that?" Well, I'm trying to get lessons, because I did try it the next day in the cafeteria. Didn't work. So I must be doing something wrong, but I'll come by and visit, do some PD with y'all or something, because I got to get that down. That was amazing. I mean, this was amazing, the Department of Education. But getting six hundred and fifty students, that size, that age, just to stop everything that they were doing was amazing. Congratulations to y'all. Now, we'll move on to Item Six, District Presentations.
Mr. Amaya, members of the board, we, each year at this time, we bring you the high school allotment goals. And here to present those allot, uh, high school allotment goals are Mr. and Mrs. Stumball.
Just got to wait on the technology.
We have the highlights of the high school allotment.
Yes, sir. Unless you wanted me to go bullet by bullet, but it's more... All right, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Salazar, good evening. And I'm going to hit on some of the highlights of our 2017, 2018 high school allotment plan. We have several goals here, but I'll just briefly touch on some of the highlights for each goal. Program Goal Number One is just to, is additional instructional personnel. So you'll see we have two, one English and one math person allotted out of high school allotment to reduce class size and help promotion rate, reduce failure rate, and overall campus ratings. That's the idea behind that. If you go to Program Goal Number Two, which is college readiness, with our, with moving to an eleventh, twelfth grade campus, the majority of our focus has moved to college readiness, and how can we move the needle in a forward manner as far as getting kids prepared for school, whether it's, uh, upper, sorry, high, institutes of higher education through SAT, PSAT, TSI, and improving those rates. So you'll see, we have thirty-five thousand dollars allotted. Most of that comes from SAT, ACT improvements. We have some turn-it-in software for our dual enrollment students. We used to use Schmooop. We don't use Schmooop as much anymore. And this is where we buy our TSI SureScore materials, which is an improvement to help us improve in the reading, writing, and math areas of the TSI. So you'll see that money allotted for the, addressing the college readiness standards as far as that one. Program Goal Number Three, which is college, increasing college awareness and dual enrollment. This is where a big chunk of our high school allotment goes. We are a very robust dual enrollment program, and I'm very proud of that, because we have many students that leave with multiple, multiple hours, double-digit hours going to, to an institute of higher education. As we know, it's, college is expensive. Many of you have kids, students in college, so y'all know that. So anything we can do to help prepare students for, for college and send them ahead is our mission behind that. So you'll see a hundred and thirty-four, sorry, a hundred and twenty-six thousand allotted for that. That covers dual enrollment costs. We switched to TFC, so hopefully, what the, and we do still use Lamar, but we're hoping that some of the allotted amounts comes down because of the rate that TFC is giving, is giving us, so I can use it for enhancing technology in other areas that we need to do at Los Fresnos High School. This also pays for our high school, sorry, our AP exams, also our PSAT exams, as far as that. Also covers our academic banquet and marketing of our top ten students. This year, we also bought some yard signs, which will be going out for our AP Scholars, which you saw tonight, just to enhance marketing and some of the things that we do at Los Fresnos High School to promote what we do as far as that. So this is where the majority of our high school allotment goes to, again, because of our dual enrollment numbers, which I'm very proud of as far as that. Program Goal Number Four, I'm sorry, I'm going through my hard copy here, which is intervention strategies, which covers our tutorials as far as AP. One thing we do to keep our AP scores moving, moving north, I guess, moving the needle north, is we have AP tutorials, which will require students to attend, so we can maintain that success rate and then keep it and improve it. So a lot of that goes to our AP tutorials, which you see heavy in the spring as we get closer to that. Also, we have, we started this year PSAT Zero Period, and we've had some PSAT Saturday preparation days as we get ready for those tests. You saw the students here tonight that were recognized, which means monetary awards for them as they go into their senior year. So we're really trying to promote that this year, a little bit more than we have in the past. This, this goal also covers summer testing for students who haven't been successful on, and of course, exam pays for that. One new area, if you'll see, I don't know if it goes, let me see if I hit if it goes the button, you'll see a hundred and five thousand, or first two staff salaries last year, when we looked at our college application rates and FAS application rates, we realized that five counselors, it's a lot for five counselors to schedule, counsel, and do everything, and then try to make sure we're getting every kid applied, every kid financial aid. So Mr. Salazar and Mr. McDonough and I discussed how can we improve that. So we have brought on a higher education coordinator and a transition specialist, which now sole focus is making sure students are applying to college, applying for scholarships, applying for financial aid. And I'm proud to say, as of Monday, we're about ninety-one percent of students have already applied to a two-year, four-year university, one month into the school year. So very proud of that. Very proud of the program that's in place, so I think it's well-spent. So that's a new chunk that you see as far as that for, for this goal. And then we have supplemental resources. You can see nineteen thousand dollars there allotted for supplies, equipment, technology. One thing that I am going to do, since our dual enrollment costs are going to decrease a little bit, is we're going to offer five campus-based grants for two thousand dollars each for teachers to apply for, to enhance technology, supplies. And they're going to have to tell us how they're going to use it, and we're going to base it on a criteria selection. So students want an extra two thou, teachers will want an extra two thousand dollars to spend as far as supplies for a grant if they want to promote something new that's innovative, to think outside the box in their classrooms. So we're going to provide that through this as well. And then our last bit is student travel. This covers our RGV lead students, who are going to promote college readiness. They present at many, many different events here in the Lower Rio Grande Valley. Also for teachers to stay up with AP training, dual enrollment trainings, national math and science incentives. So this is where we have a lot of professional development that take care of our, that our students and our teachers as far as college readiness. I know that's a lot. Do I have any, any questions? Any, any questions as far as any of the information that I presented?
Good evening again, Mr. Amaya, members of the board, Mr. Salazar. So I'm going to do the same thing. I'm just going to go over some highlights from our Los Fresnos United High School allotment plan. You'll see a lot of similarities, but then there are some differences just because of our, the population we serve. So our first goal, it centered more on EOC and classroom tutoring to make sure that our students are gaining twelve credits by the time that they leave Los Fresnos United and move on to the high school. We've always spent a lot of money in this area, but one of the things that we're going to really work hard on this year, I italicize, and it says, "Provide more instructional time and focus to students, including pre-AP students." So we feel like we've been doing pretty well in getting our EOC scores up and in getting the number of kids who gain the right number of credits before they move on to the high school. But one area where we want to see some improvement is not having so many pre-AP kids drop a pre-AP class at some point during this semester. So we have dedicated tutoring sessions and dedicated tutoring teachers just for pre-AP kids. We're trying to get them to see that even if you can just keep a seventy-five in the class, the rigor of the class is going to better prepare you for college than dropping it and moving to a regular class, where you might not have to attend tutoring, but it's okay. You need to learn to do these things now, because you might need help once you go into college. So that's a big goal from this initiative. It's going to cost us a little bit more money, because we are having more teachers stay, but we feel it'll be a good investment, and it'll help us to keep more kids in pre-AP classes. The next goal talks about, I quit too many times. It talks about additional academic materials. So two things that are kind of new to this are, we're trying to provide additional supplies for our biology teachers, so that we can do more dissection labs. We felt, in reflecting on how much lab time we spend in our biology classes, that we definitely weren't doing enough of that. So it's not, it's not cheap, it's expensive. So we've dedicated some of our high school allotment for that. And we also have some new online components that we're looking at. We had a handful of teachers who had the opportunity to attend ISTI this past summer, which is an international science, technology, and education conference. And they saw some great things, specifically in the area of math and science, where they can use things called doodle notes, which are electronic, and just really bring the notes that the teacher is doing to life, and it brings animation to it. So we're going to be experimenting with some of that stuff this year. The next slide is about, is dedicated to professional development. I've mentioned in the past that we've done campus book studies. This year, we're branching out to where each department is doing their own book study, so the department gets to pick the book. And so we, we purchase those books using High School Allotment Fund. Our English department has already started. They're reading a book called Entertaining an Elephant, and our other departments will follow suit in the next coming months. And another new thing that we're doing is e-colors in education for some of our at-risk students. If you're not familiar with that program, we had the opportunity to participate in that last year as a leadership team through Main Office. And I found it really impactful, and I learned that she does that with students as well. And so I reached out to some of the schools that have used her for students and heard nothing but great things about how it helped the kids to see things that maybe they felt or other people felt were flaws, more as limiters, and how to work past them. So she will be coming in actually next month to do that with about a hundred and sixty of what we consider our most at-risk kids, in hopes of helping them to try to see college as a reality. And this next slide is supplemental instructional resources, more geared toward technology. We're always trying to enhance the technology that we have on campus. As Mr. Stumball mentioned, I'll give him the credit, it was a great idea, to have an innovative teaching and learning grant, where teachers have the opportunity to apply for some funds that they could use for anything. And so we're going to use some of our high school allotment money to do that as well.
You seem surprised that he had a good idea. I, I just, it's okay.
So we're excited to see what our teachers come up with. It might be flexible seating, it might be more technology. Some of our teachers in the new building have the new throwback projectors that are interactive, but some of our teachers in our, not older, because it's not old, but in the previous, more existing building, don't have those. So if, maybe they want to apply for the grant to be able to have that, that kind of projector. So we're excited to see what the teachers come up with. This next one has always been there. It's a stipend for core area teachers for the ninth grade level, and we appreciate you guys supporting that, because it is definitely needed, because freshmen are very challenging. And then our next goal talks about EOC remediation. So one of the things that we're working on this year, and why this is a little bit different, is because we do a Skill Day each week, which we've been doing for a few years, but we're trying to reduce, we have a good problem. We have too many kids coming to Skill Days. Today, for example, for math, we had thirty-six kids come for Algebra Skill Day, which means that the teachers pre-selected a skill from last week that they felt the kids were struggling with. Today, it happened to be slope and intercept. I don't have to do that either, so I would have been there today. And so there were thirty-six kids that came. Well, in the past, we only had one or two teachers. Well, you can imagine, that was not very effective, even with two teachers. There was just, the group sizes were too large. So we've moved to having three teachers on Skill Day, so that our sizes are more like ten to twelve. So it can be more intentional, more prescriptive, and it really is truly a small-group setting, but that does cost us a little bit more money. This next initiative is about our Tutoring Assistance Program, where we're able to bring in someone during the instructional day to provide assistance as we get closer to the end of course exams. And one other benefit that this has is that it helps us to see maybe prospective teachers. We've gotten people who have just maybe finished their degree in December and are permanent subs, and we're able to kind of see how they do in a small-group setting. And we've actually hired people that we've used as tap subs. And this next one is college awareness. Having tenth graders on campus, last year was our, school first year, it was kind of like a whole new awareness of things that you need to try to get those kids ready for. So we have some new things in place this year, mostly because of the PSAT. All of our sophomores take the PSAT. Last year, we didn't really push the tutoring for them. This year, we did. We had Thursday morning tutoring the whole month of September, and we did two Saturday academies for PSAT, and we had a lot of kids that took advantage of that. And we're also going to provide opportunities for them to travel to, some of our more at-risk students, to travel to local options that they might have for two-year plans, two-year universities, or even just certification programs. We feel like if they see those things when they're younger, then maybe they'll have that, it'll give them a little bit more of a drive or an initiative to, to do what they need to do to make sure that they can get there. Any questions?
Mr. Amaya, we'll bring back, um, a certain evaluation of how we did on our, um, high school allotment goals at the end of the year. It's a requirement that we, we do that. So it's a requirement to present them at the beginning of the year and that we also bring them back to you at the end of the year to see how well we did. Thank you both.
Thank you very much. Item number seven, district reports. Mr. Salazar.
Mr. Amaya, each year we'd like to bring you fundraising reports. So, um, we'd like, there's a little over a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars worth of fundraising that we're going this school year. A few more fundraisers come in. This is how we, this is how we provide some of the experiences out, uh, experiences beyond what is allowed in, in U I L, experiences be, uh, that expand our students' horizons. So there are a lot of, uh, sponsors working really hard to raise these, this type of, these types of funds for our students and in our community. Again, it's just, uh, for information purposes and wonder if you have any questions at this time.
Anyone like for them to go over each one of them, item by item? No? No question?
Mr. Amaya, I'd also like to mention that, um, the reports that are not on here, these are the financial reports. Our meeting comes a little earlier this month, so we'll make sure to have those financial reports included in next month's or at our, our next meeting.
Thank you, sir. We do not have anyone sign up for public audience. We move on to consent agenda. We have posted twelve items in consent agenda. Is there any board member that would like to remove one and move it over to action item for discussion? Since there is no one who wishes to pull an item, I would take a motion to accept consent agenda as listed and as posted, items one through twelve. Mr. Trevino?
I'll move, um, to, uh, approve items listed, one through twelve on today's agenda.
Thank you. Sir, is there a second? Mr. Castillo? I have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda as listed, as posted, items one through twelve. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Unanimous? We move to action items, discuss and take action to approve, add, to approve, to add, revise or delete local policies as recommended by Tasby Policy Service and according to the instruction sheet for the Tasby Localized Policy Manual Update 108, first reading. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Ms. Castillo.
Mr. Amaya, I move that the board adopt the local policies contained within the reconstructed Tasby Local Policy Manual effective today?
Yes.
Oh, that's for the next one, uh, off?
Yes, that's in the title. Do I have a motion to add, revise, uh, to approve the add, the addition, revision or deletion of local policies as recommended by Tasby Policy Service and according to the instruction sheets for the Tasby Localized Policy Manual Update 108, first reading? So moved by Ms. Castillo.
So moved.
Is there a second? Ms. Peterson? Discussion. There being no discussion, we have a motion and a second to approve action item number one for the addition, revision or deletion of local policies as recommended by Tasby Policy Service and according to the instruction sheet for the Tasby Localized Policy Manual Update 108, first reading. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Is unanimous? Action item number two. Discuss and take action to repeal all previously adopted policies and adopt local policies as prepared by Tasby Policy Service. And we have an attached list. Is there a motion? Mr. Garza?
I move that the board adopt the local policies contained within the reconstructed, constructed Tasb Localized Policy Manual effective October second, 2017 and repeal all previous policies.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Mr. Trevino? Discussion. There being no discussion, we have a motion and a second that the board adopt the local policies contained within the reconstructed Tasby Localized Policy Manual effective this date and repeal all previous policies. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. It is unanimous? Action item number three, discuss and take action to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations for the positions for the 2017-2018 school year for teachers. Do we have a motion? Ms. Castillo? I have a motion. Is there a second? Mr. Garza? Discussion. There being no discussion, we have a motion and a second to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations for the positions of teachers for the 2017-2018 school year. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. It is unanimous? We have our new teachers in the audience. Please stand. Congratulations and welcome. Welcome aboard. We know that pretty soon you'll be up here getting all the, the masters and the doctors and the spouses are going, "Wait a minute, wait a minute." Okay, we do have, uh, we're gonna go into a closed session pursuant to section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one and five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four, the Texas Government Code. It is now six fifty-eight. It is seven forty-eight. We're back in open session. Item number one in open session has been taken care of on the superintendent's recommendations. Item number two, consider and take possible action regarding superintendent's recommendation to terminate, uh, to propose termination of the term contract of teacher G M during the contract period for good cause. Do we have a motion? Mr. Garza?
See if I can get this right. I move to propose the termination of the term contract of teacher Jeronimo Martinez during the contract for good cause and authorize the superintendent to send all notices as required by law.
Do we have a second? Mr. Farias? Discussion. There being no discussion, we have a motion to propose the termination of the term contract of teacher Jeronimo Martinez during the contract for good cause and authorize the superintendent to send all notices as required by law. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. It is unanimous. Item number sep, excuse me, seven-zero, item number three. Discuss and take action to approve the formative, uh, the formative performance evaluation of superintendent as discussed in executive session. Is there a motion? Ms. Peterson?
Sir, I'd like to approve the formative performance evaluation of the superintendent as discussed in executive session.
Is there a second? You got it, Ms. Trevino? Discussion. There being no discussion, we have a motion and a second to approve the formative performance evaluation of superintendent as discussed in executive session. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. It is unanimous? That is unanimous. Mr. Superintendent?
Mr. Amaya, members of the board, on Monday, October ninth, we will not have classes. It's a holiday on our instructional calendar. On Saturday, October fourteenth, we do have the eighth annual Leo Illar Foundation 5K Run Walk. Uh, it starts and ends at Leo Illar Memorial Stadium. And on Monday, November thirteenth, we have our regular school board meeting here at six P M. Kids Athletics, Lady Falcons are playing San Benito at home on October third. And on Friday, September fifteenth, the Falcons, uh, host the Hardinjin South Hawks. Those are all the announcements we have.
Questions from anyone? We are at the end of our agenda. The meeting is adjourned. It is seven fifty-one.